Yes.
Yeah.
Next one, please. It'll be off on the thirty first, first and second.
I guess it's worth the work, huh?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's time for your pledge.
Hello, everyone. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We welcome everyone. For a discussion, we have approval of the minutes for January seventh, twenty twenty four. Do we have any corrections?
I have none.
You know? Yeah? I move then that we approve the minutes for January seventh, twenty twenty four.
I second that.
All those in favor? Jeff's abstaining wasn't here.
Could I just say something?
Yep.
You might want to change the year on that.
You know what? You're right. Amended to twenty, January seventh, twenty twenty five.
Well, we approved the minutes from twenty twenty four, too.
Oh, that's on the, no, the minutes actually say twenty five.
Yeah, the minutes say twenty five, but I read it over here.
Let's see agenda.
Yeah. All right. Under old business, we have sealed bid proposal for sewer foreclosed and town-owned properties.
So, in your packets, you have a notice of, actually, that shouldn't say tax sale, that should say notice of sale of town-owned properties. And the five that we're looking at are Church Street, Depot Street, Main Street, Gaggenon Street, and the corner of Park and Meads Road. It's a combination of properties that the town has owned for, I have no idea how many years. And then two of them are actually sewer foreclosed, Church Street and Depot Street. So, what I have here is just a general format, and then I have individual bid forms. So, but I have blanks that I need you folks to fill in.
If I could ask one question? The one you refer to as Depot Street, isn't that Park Street?
Oh, you're right.
Okay.
Yep. Good, great.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Oh, no. Nice energy.
That corner, yeah. So, beginning with the general notice, so when would you like to have bids due?
Now, these are the properties that are going to be auctioned off by sealed bid, that they then send it back to us.
Correct.
And then we review those and select the one that we feel is most appropriate if we think
Correct.
it is. And you suggested that we have a minimum bid on there as well.
Yes.
Which was fine with me. The only thing, I would say that I don't know if it's appropriate for the auction part, but I would like to see if the board would want to place any conditions on the, which one is it? The Church Street property. I'd like to have us, if it is sold, to convey it with a condition that it not be used for the production or sale of marijuana products. The church, Methodist church.
I agree with that. Do you have a comment?
Am I able to ask a question?
No.
Kenny Jakes, I'm with Meserveir and Associates, and I'm here actually on the RFP for the properties that you're thinking of listing. Just a question, and maybe you've already discussed it before, but that property on Church Street is a fairly saleable property. So, I'm just wondering if you've looked at the option that if that became one of the properties that you considered putting on the market? You've got a property there that, that if you list it, it's known to anybody around the world within twenty-four hours that that property is for sale. The parsonage is still a pretty solid building. And my concern is, because I sat on the board before and we, we put properties out to bid, and Jeff, you know, we, you know, they were boomerangs, they kept coming back to us. So, I'm just wondering if you've considered making that part of that package that you put out in the spring, if that's in fact when you're going to list those properties? Because the house and the size of the lot makes for a sizable property. And the cost of tearing down that church, I don't believe there's any saving that church. The brickwork is just so bad, and all the buttresses that they put on there are falling off. So, it might be worth thinking about listing that, because investors could come in, purchase the building, and, and take the church down, and possibly they could, they could regain some of their money in, in the sale of the organ, and all, you know, the stained glass windows, things of that nature. I just didn't know if you had, had thought about that. That's a large parcel of land that possibly another house could be built on at some point, and the parsonage could probably be saved. And, and that might be, that might be enticing to an investor. We are getting a lot of investors from outside of the area. And my concern is that if it's just put out to bid locally, you're missing a whole group of potential buyers.
So, you're suggesting that instead of auctioning it off with the final, whatever you do?
Yeah, or doing a bid.
To actually list it as a property as we were going to do with several other properties?
Yes.
And see what the market would say?
Yes.
Would that still negate our wanting to have a codicil to the deed to restrict it so it couldn't be used as marijuana?
You can, you can put whatever deed restriction you want on it. You're the, you own it, the town owns it. And I would, I would probably also put a stipulation in there that, you know, something has to be done in that church. You just don't want that thing sitting there again and ending up on Nap Street someday, because that's been going on for ten years. That's been falling apart, brick by brick.
Right.
So, just food for thought, and, and just, just something I thought of, looking over the other properties that may or may not be listed in the spring.
Well, you're, you're obviously a professional in the business. Do you think there is a market?
Yeah, I do, because it's a.
I mean, the parsonage is good and solid, without a doubt, but the, the brick building next door.
Yeah, I would, I would make that, you know, that somebody has to take that down or have proof of, of the means to renovate that. That's a, that's a million-dollar-plus renovation to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Easily, easily in today's market. It's probably two billion. I would make it a stipulation, if you sold that property, that the church must come down. And, and just doing some basic math, that's at least an acre there. It's quite possible where the parking lot and the Conex boxes are, that could turn into another house lot at, at some time.
Well, I appreciate that input. That's something to think about. I'm not really familiar with selling or markets or how that stuff works or what the odds are, so.
You know, when a property, when a property hits the market, it enters the MLS, and then the MLS is, I wouldn't say it's a contract, but have agreements with Realtor.com, Zillow, Redfin, other, other, other real estate websites, and it, I mean, literally, around the world. People are moving here from elsewhere. So, I, I just think it's, instead of, instead of, you know, knowing what people, you know, what the town is owed on that, and that's public knowledge, somebody can sit there by the window till five o'clock and, okay, we know what the town has into it. That's, you know, you have any other bids? No? Well, there's my bid, and you're kind of stuck with it. So, I, I would, I would just be cautious of, that's fine not being another marijuana establishment, but I would have a, I would have a stipulation that that church has to come down. But I think you, it's possible you can realize, the town can realize more money back, marketing that as one of those, as one of those properties that you're proposing to put out. I think it might be one of the more valuable ones with the right buyer. Let's say you list it for six months and you don't get it, you can still always revert back to the bid process.
No, I was thinking three months.
Well, depends on when you want to list it. You know, again, this is the time of year where things are quiet, you have more people.
But we're not in the real estate business.
Under, no, understood, understood. My, my, my point was just, have you thought about listing that property instead of just going sealed bid? Fewer people see it when it's just a sealed bid. Everybody sees it when it becomes a marketed property.
Doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah. Now, on a sealed bid, why is it not seen so much? What's the difference?
It's not, it, it's not out on every, you know, I was, actually, I was looking for the minutes on the town website tonight, and it's back to twenty twenty-three, so are you putting it out on the website? And, and that's not a, that's no dig of any, any kind, but that's my point. Who's going to know it's, it's out for bid? It's going to hit the Sun Journal, it'll, you know, it'll, not that many people are going to know about it if you list it. I just think it's worth tabling that one to do more research on it, whether it's me or somebody else who, who, who ends up, you know, getting that request for proposal. I think you should, I think you should give it a little more thought before, before acting on it.
I have heard the comment from someone that that church could be, I don't know the exact words, but they could just go in, demo it, clean it out, there's a word for it, you probably know the word. They could take the stained glass out, they could take the pews out.
Repurpose it.
Repurpose it, they could take all that stuff out, and they can make a ton on repurposing all that stuff, and then just have it tore down. I heard someone say a duplex. They would, they would think about building a duplex there.
Yeah.
If that's true, you.
And, and that's kind of what I meant, Jeff, by, if it was marketed out there as a listed property, there are going to be more eyes and ears on that. And with the multiple listing service, you can market a property two ways. You can market it as residential, MLS will allow you to market it two ways. So, it could be listed as a residential property, and it can also be listed as a commercial property. So, you're getting, you're getting kind of like a fork in the road, and you get different people looking at it.
All right, well, thank you for speaking up on that. Are we looking to set bid prices tonight, or?
That's entirely up to, up to you folks. So, like I said, we do have these five properties, you know, you do have the template for that.
Right. Now, we, the town only receives the amount of money that's owed to us.
Correct.
So, if the ninety-five Park Street, if someone made a bid of ten thousand dollars, we would only get thirty-two fifty out of that, the balance would be going back to the former owner or to the state or to whoever.
Correct.
Right. Same would be the truth with the Methodist church and everybody else. So, our interest is the taxes that are due.
Right.
Correct.
The other three, because those are town-owned properties?
Yeah.
And have been for a number of years, that anything above and beyond comes to the town.
Oh, really? For those?
And those, and we'll never recover what we have into them anyway.
I would think we'd want, we'd want any bids back before the end of June, I would imagine, before we have to start a new, that's an awful lot.
So, you could do, you know, the first meeting in March.
Yeah, I was thinking.
Do you want to, do you want to table these again and think about it some more?
I could see all four of these being put out to bid, but I, I agree in.
On the church?
About the church. I really think that there's some value there. I think we'd be missing something if we didn't do, if we didn't heed what Kenny's saying.
Not only value, Jeff, but just the possibility of somebody coming in here with, with more resources to do something with it. That's a, that's a free, local parish town, you know?
Because the thing is, if we put it out to bid and we don't put a stipulation about tearing it down, which is going to have to be an investor, because the normal person isn't going to be able to afford that. So, if we didn't do that stipulation, we're going to end up with this again, and again, and again. And then the town's going to really have to take the expense of tearing it down, and we don't want that.
Right. Yeah.
I think, I think we'd be missing an opportunity if we put it out to bid.
So, so you're suggesting we add a stipulation that the church be demolished?
Yeah.
What happens?
Somebody wants to renovate it.
And is the marijuana stipulation okay to?
Somebody want to put a couple million dollars in there?
Yeah. Okay. And to?
Or it could be conditioned.
And you're suggesting that we then market that through a realtor?
Yeah.
As with the other ones that we have? Okay. It's okay with me.
And we have, we already have numbers on the other, the other four of them, what we need to ask for? So, we can potentially table the church and move on, we'll set the bids for, for the rest of them tonight?
Yes.
So, I think that's probably what we should do then, so we can get a move on the other ones.
Good.
Do we need any motions to set those tonight, or are we just going to move forward with the?
So, I need, what day you want the bids due, what day you're going to open them, and the minimum amounts for the other four lots. And you'll also need a, a motion to table Church Street.
Well, I, I'd like to make a motion that we table the property on Church Street and to list that with a realtor with the two conditions that we talked about, the tearing it down, the demolition of the church, as well as restricting the property from a marijuana use perspective that we discussed.
Or cannabis?
Or cannabis. That's right. I'll second your term. I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
He did.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Second, all those in favor?
You made the motion? No.
Unopposed?
Hold on. I, I support it.
Jim?
What was your hand kind of?
I, I, I was in favor.
Okay.
The brain roof works slowly. Sorry, sorry.
All right.
Now, mat fifteen, what's the minimum that we need to set? Do you have it already? All right, well, we need to set a, a date for it to have the bid, that we're talking about the end of March or beginning of March? First or second?
It's a month.
So, you have the.
March fourth.
So, your meetings are on Tuesdays, so you're going to want all bids in here by close of business the Monday prior.
The prior, like the twenty-fourth then?
What is?
Or the third? The day before?
The day before.
Day before, the third.
Monday, the third, and the meeting's on the.
So, we want the bids back on the third. We would just open the bids on the fourth.
Yep.
Of March.
Of March.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I make a motion that we have, that we require all bids be back by March third of twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
All those in favor? And then we're going to, we need to, a motion, we're going to send them out as well, or?
No.
No?
No, I'll, I'll get these done this week.
Okay. So, that we just need to move forward with our minimum.
Correct.
So, I make a motion, we set minimum bid for mat fifteen, lot nineteen, at thirty-two, three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that.
All those in favor? Unopposed? I make a motion, we set mat twenty, lot eighteen, at twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
All those in favor? I make a motion, we set the minimum bid for mat five. Lot five, at two thousand one hundred dollars. All those in.
I'll second that.
What was the number, Will?
Two thousand one hundred dollars. All those in favor? Unopposed? Then I make a motion, we set the minimum bid for mat twenty, lot thirty, at twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
John seconds, all those in favor? I appreciate you having all those in there.
And for the, the bid form itself, it lists, you know, the, the information at the top about the, the dates, all that everything, the name, address, phone number of the bidder, the map and lot, the bid amount. Do you still want to have a statement of intended use, intended use or plan for the property, and then a statement of experience and capacity to complete the intended use and plan for the property?
On those four?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be good, because there's some cleanup and stuff involved.
There's, I do have one question, and that is the one on Park Street, ninety-five Park Street, the lot, all the debris on it. Can we add a condition that the deed would be conveyed after the property has been cleaned up? To the bid for that one property?
Yeah, I've been meaning to ask, because we didn't ask at the last meeting. You know, we had originally with the person who had said that how much it would cost to clean it versus what the land is worth, and we had said that could we exchange the land for the cleanup? And I read what we got from MMA, and I appreciate their input, but I, I didn't see where there was a problem or an issue with that arrangement.
Right.
And I thought, he's going to clean it up, and we had said, can we make it where we transfer the deed when the cleanup is done? And you were going to check to see if he was okay with that?
Yep.
And was he okay with that?
He was. He was going to actually think about what he was going to do with the property, and he even floated a couple ideas, but he didn't, didn't give me an absolute yes, this is what I'm, I'm going to do with it, so.
Because, I mean, I, I still don't think there was anything wrong with that arrangement. But, like I said, I read the, the legal advice from MMA, and I appreciated it, but I think we were perfectly capable of making that arrangement on our own. It wasn't hurting anyone, it was going to clean up the property, and, but if we're going to put it out to bid, then fine.
Yeah, I, I.
But they have to clean it up.
Well, the other thing, too, you, you need to remember is you can accept or reject any or all bids.
We, we may very well find ourselves in four weeks doing that exchange, if we don't get any bids or they're not acceptable.
Well, anybody that's looking at it's not going to want it.
But we'll make, we will have made one effort to try and get the best value on the open market.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
I think that's the biggest.
Now, do we need to approve this form? Or is there any other business on the form? All right, the way it is.
I, I just mentioned, I'd like to have the, for that lot ninety, or the mat fifteen, lot fit nineteen, the ninety-five Park Street, that we basically ensure that we're going to get the property cleaned up, because one is the amount of the tax rolls, and two, everybody complains about it not being cleaned up for the past five years.
Oh, it's an ISO.
Exactly. And if we make that conditional of the deed, then it'll go for that.
Yep. I need to, the bid.
Right. And I would make the motion that we modify the bid sheet to include that as a condition.
For just that individual one?
For that one.
Do we want to talk about a timeline with that, or as far as what people should be expected, you know, expected cleaning up with X amount of days, or if they did bid on it?
Well, I mean, we have on the, on the form, their intended, whatever, so their intentions would be written.
And if we said that the deed was contingent on it, they couldn't do anything with it otherwise, so that's their incentive.
Yeah. Now, do we need to amend that specific one, or are we just going to look at it on the bids?
I, I think Bruce answered the question, because it's, it's, it's laid out in the.
Right. It's going to be laid out in the statement of use, right? So, we don't really need to.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, we'll move on to new business. JCR request, polymer transfer pump.
Yeah. So, at the sewer treatment plant, we dewater sludge, part of the dewatering process is the use of polymer that we inject into the centrifuge. We receive the polymer in fifty-five gallon drums, and we transfer it to a day tank that is calibrated, so we can track the amount of gallons that we use each dewatering run. We transfer a pump that we've had for twenty-five years, has died. We do not have the ability to transfer into the day tank via a pump. I was hoping to get a new pump in place before we had to run another dewatering cycle, but we fired the centrifuge up today. So, we did the transfer basically by hand. It's not convenient, it's not the way to operate going forward, but we'll get through this later in the session. A new transfer pump is about forty-three, forty-four hundred dollars. We're going to have to have new brackets made on the wall. I'm thinking we can complete this project for fifty-five hundred dollars or less. And I'm coming to you tonight, and I'll go to the J Board next week at their meeting to request using joint reserve account funds for the purchase and installation of a new polymer transfer pump.
So, you got to have it?
We got to have it. It will be the same brand and manufacturer of the polymer pump that feeds the centrifuge that we purchased about three years ago. It's a little bit different in design, it has a different purpose, and that pump was like just over ten thousand dollars installed. So, even though this is similar, it's a little bit different, doesn't have the calibration, doesn't have the things with the water, city water to feed the centrifuge, but similar in nature, same manufacturer, same supplier, but different in design.
And we're doing all right in the joint sewer account, reserve account?
Currently, the joint sewer reserve account has a balance of about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. There are about twenty-five thousand dollars pending expenditures from it that have already been approved, so we have about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars left in that account right now. It is healthy, yes.
I'll make the motion that we approve up to five hundred and.
I'll make the motion that we approve up to five hundred and, five hundred and, five thousand, five hundred dollars from the joint sewer reserve account for a new polymer transfer pump.
I'll second.
All those in favor? And then opposed? Up next, we have real estate broker, RFP. This is the Realtor Services.
That's it, we've saved one proposal.
Drum roll.
Is it Meservier?
Meservier.
So we just have one? That's not a lot to decide. We can reject it?
I'd say we either approve or, or disapprove it, right?
So.
So there are, I was gonna say, just so you know how, how we ended up with that, there are two, um, real estate brokers here in town. Um, trying to keep business local, I sent the RFP to only those two brokers in town, since it's Little More Falls property and Little More Falls taxes.
If he reads back.
Yeah, we, we talked about that. We looking to read this whole thing to everybody?
Just the highlights.
Just the highlights?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, or, or we could ask for a synopsis from, from somebody that's in the audience.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We are fortunate to have somebody in the audience, though, perhaps we could invite them to say something.
Yes.
Perhaps we could.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to put in a proposal. Uh, I think it's, it's in the best interest of the town to try to start selling some of these properties, and I realize, Jim, the town is definitely not in the real estate business, but we've been stuck in a, kind of stuck in a hole here for a long time of, of just properties coming back through, and I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for the town to, to get out there further, and we are, we are getting more and more investors from outside of the area, because it's unaffordable in other towns. I've been involved in real estate my entire adult life, I've owned multiple properties in Little More Falls. I was first licensed in the late eighties. And speaking to Meservier and Associates, Sue Meservier started Meservier and Associates several years back, but she's also been a Realtor since the eighties. Her daughter and, and son now own the company, but they have wealth of knowledge in the field. We have over forty-five agents in our company, we have four different locations, we have four licensed agents out of our office here in Little More Falls, and a great backup. I have a full-time administrative assistant who has a background in accounting and paralegal. Uh, we work with multiple title companies. I have some references in there that I think you'll find quite credible, and ask permission from all of them, uh, ahead of time. I think we can, I think we could do a good job marketing them, and, and would have no problem working with the town's attorney. And, 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 uh, a, a, another title company who handles just about every type of property sale that you can think of, so. You know, it's not always easy, you don't just put a sign in the ground and show off with closing, it's not always that easy, so. And there are bumps and things that we can, it, as we move forward, once we, once we have a, if, if you accept me, once we have a, a client, age, relationship, it would probably be best for me to work directly with either the town's attorney or Carrie. It'd be best to have one person who relays information. Uh, but once you, once you, once you lock into a contract with somebody, there are some confidentiality's here. Nobody's trying to hide anything, but that's just the way the law is, it's confidentiality. I can't share, let's say I bring a buyer, I can't share, you know, their reason for doing things, just like I can't share your intentions, but we can, it can be well documented if there are any deed restrictions or restrictions placed on the purchase of the property. And as we talked earlier about, about the Church Street property, as soon as it hits the MLS, very rapidly, it goes out to all the other real estate websites in the country, and then, and then really around the world.
Question. The, 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 the commission that you cited, that is all-inclusive for seller and buyer and?
Correct.
Includes all marketing expenses?
Correct, yes.
MLS expenses, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct, I can, I can speak generally on this, I don't know if any of you are aware, and I, I don't know if your question, Jim, was due to some of the changes that have happened recently with real estate sales, some.
I haven't been on the market in a long, long time.
Yeah, it, so, yes, six percent covers buyer's agent, so, you know, it, it's open to every licensed Realtor in the, in the state of Maine.
Okay. Then you take care of whatever.
Correct, six percent, bottom line, covers marketing, covers everything, the town, again, these are things that we have to get into with the attorney, but yours, you know, the town, I'm not sure if the town is exempt, is exempt from main state transfer tax, that's a very small number. Uh, the town is responsible for deed preparation, which either the town's attorney would do, or a, or a settlement service like a, like a two lights settlement.
So what happens if they don't sell in, say, six months or twelve months?
You can, you can continue to keep the property listed, you can pull the listing, if, if any time.
Can we cancel our arrangement at that point?
Absolutely. And, and if, if three months you're not happy with it, you decide you wanna go to the bid process, you say, Kenny, we've decided to take the, a different, uh, a different road, we'll terminate the contract and carry on as we did before.
So some things haven't really changed?
No, no, they really haven't.
Now, will your fee be contingent on the property selling?
Yeah.
Correct.
If it doesn't sell, I don't get paid. Pull it back, and we won't.
Correct, there's, there's no, really, there's no cost to the town unless it sells.
And would you be willing for us to, say, approve this contract for the next twelve months or so? So that you'd be our preferred vendor for any properties that we have?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And we can, we can, once, once you approve it, we can, you know, we would have to get something with the attorney, and then terms of that, six percent, that's public knowledge, but just remember, things become confidential after that.
Yeah, and I, I think our intent was to try and not burden the town manager with this, and it'd be primarily the firm that we select working with the attorneys.
Yep. You know, I can most certainly keep Carrie up to date, I don't need to call her every time there's a showing, she's, she's busy, you guys, you guys are busy, that's on us, and and I'm assuming all the properties will be vacant at the time?
Yep.
Yeah. Right. And, and, you know, there are, there are certain safeguards that need to be in place, obviously.
In the interest of transparency, did we hear anything from Ms. Whittemore? None whatsoever?
Make the motion to, uh, make the motion to appoint Meservier and Associates as the town real estate broker. Do we need to approve any contracts, or just simple as that?
For the liquidation of these properties?
Well, you discussed anything else that might come up too?
Yeah. I, 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 I would amend that if I could, for these properties and others for the period of the next twelve months.
I mean, making him the town real estate person, he could sell the town to Augusta.
No, apartment is cheaper, no taxes.
All right, given Jim's amendment? I second him.
I, I, I.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for showing interest and giving us.
Thank you. You have to do the work.
Yeah, it's okay, I like it. Quick question, I, I understand this is probably going to be later in the spring before they're listed?
Yes.
Doctor.
Yeah, and that's, and that's probably wise to wait until spring, people do like to see what's under, well, we don't have much, no, but you know, it just, you just tend to have more buyers at, at that point.
Yeah, we still have the, um, yeah.
Right, redemption, giving you a right of redemption, yeah. Yeah?
Up next, we have the deluse petition.
So this was turned in, there were two hundred and eighty-three certified signatures on it. Based on the last gubernatorial election, there's a hundred and seven that were needed. Um, I am going to ask that we table this to the next meeting. Uh, I did get a, an opinion on this from legal, but I just need to do a little bit more homework on it before I can offer any suggestions or, or further information.
I move that we table the adult petition until our next meeting on, uh, February fourth.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? And opposed? Next, we have warrants, abatements, deeds, and quitclaim. Any concerns about any of the warrants? None? And I make the motion, we approve payroll warrant seven point one, general fund warrants, which is seven point two. Sorry, payroll warrant, number two, general fund warrant, number forty-five, number forty-four, number forty-three, number forty-six.
I'll second that.
And number forty-two?
Number? I think that's just sounds.
Oh, yeah, sorry. There's a lot of numbers.
There are.
I second, or you, Jim seconded?
All those in favor? And opposed? No abatements, no supplements, no board discussion? No, Vernon?
I, I did have one item, I think, uh, and that is, it's actually two items. One is, if I could ask the town manager to provide an updated list of the properties, uh, with two divisions. Basically, the top part being active properties, and the other one, the, the second section that says resolved, so that we're not dealing with those anymore. And on the, the ones that are active and categorized, to be auctioned, or to go to real estate, or working for a resolution. Just cause I'm getting very confused.
Yeah, a lot of them.
That's, and the other thing is, I'd like to ask the, uh, town manager to send a copy of the current personnel policy to the board, so we can have that. Whatever's currently in effect, as we consider the new updated version. That's it.
No other board discussion, uh, managers discussion?
Um, Founder Road is open. It's open, it's open, it's open, it's open, yay, beach to it.
Yes, you did.
They, uh, they took the signs down on Friday, uh, Mark called me with the, with the good news, so. It will, you know, have to be closed for a couple days when they do the, the paving this, the spring, or summer, or fall, whenever they get around to it, but um, the road is finally, finally, finally open, so. At the next meeting, I will have for you, um, the updated list of the sewer foreclosures, but I also will have for you a list of uh, real estate foreclosures. There's twenty-nine properties, some of them actually are already on the sewer list, so I, uh, I need to remove those, uh, cause it's duplicative. And then, uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention was the solar project that was proposed for the landfill. Um, I did hear from them, um, I think it was last week, the weeks are kinda blurry right now. Um, they did get the, the green light from CMP to move forward, so their engineers are working on plans and going to start, um, start that process. So, uh, it will be coming to the planning board at some point, so. So there's a, there's a little more revenue for us, Sharon.
We'll take all we can get.
Yeah, absolutely, so I'm, I'm pleased that that's, that's moving forward and in the works, so. That's pretty much it for me.
Thank you. Do we have any art and heads that wanna speak tonight?
I'll go.
So, um, it's been a, it's been a busy month. This month, I, the department as a whole, we finished our two thousand twenty-four mandatory training updates, as well as our legal updates, so every officer's in compliance with that, which is a good thing. I'm currently working on the two thousand twenty-four audit for the state of Maine, so that way I can certify that our roster is accurate. Also certify the fact that we're up to standards on training, um, as well as some other items that I, that I'm required to, to mandate every year, that's due at the end of the month. We did have an officer graduate phase two training, so that officer's currently out on the field training program right now. As a matter of fact, most likely, um, getting tased as, as we speak. And taser training. We do have another officer in FMLA, and we did have an officer resign, cause he decided to take a position with the town of Oxford. So in upcoming weeks, uh, staffing's gonna be pretty tight, but I do feel that's a hurdle we'll absolutely get over. The citizen reporting room has been completed, so it, it's nice to have citizens where they can actually come into the department, sit down, and engage in a conversation over a table with an officer. Cause I was able to utilize it today, talking to a citizen, so I think it's, it's a great thing. The, uh, new car should be ready, um, within the next couple of weeks, so hopefully we'll, we'll get a return on that here pretty soon, and it'd be nice to have it out there. Most of the work and the shower's complete, there just needs to be a fixture that needs to be replaced from, from one area to a new area, the bathroom. The bunk rooms are complete and ready for use. Um, currently, I'm working on cleaning up the department, cause it's been, uh, a lot of construction down there, so just kinda piecing things together, and, uh, when I get free time, and, and as, as pretty as I can, and despite the cold weather, we're still very, very busy. We take at least, at least a, a report a day, and, um, so far, two thousand twenty-five, we've actually executed a lot of rest. Any questions?
Oh, when do we get the tour?
What was it again?
When do we go on a tour?
On a tour, anytime you want to, I, I always, always value, uh, key members of the community, anybody in the community, you know, it's, it's their house, they pay for it, you know? So if they ever wanna get with me, and I always, always recommend that the board come down there and, and see what we're doing. Um, some of the challenges that we have, and, and what we're doing in order to make headway down there, so. The board members, a, as well as the citizens, at, at any time, you know, feel free to contact me, I'm more than happy to show you the department, I'm very proud of it.
You had said that they had the officers, you had completed the requirements. All the officers met the requirements, including physical?
No, so that's, so that's a different standard. Um, what I'm looking at is, the, the state of Maine has a, for, for our full-time officers, or full-time employee officers, and those who are part-time officers, they have to make mandated training, so there's training in, in officer wellness, there's training in special needs, there's training in mental health and community, drug abuse. As well as, uh, defensive tactics, you know, what to do and what not to do when you need to go hands-on with subjects. And then also, there's state mandatory law, as well as statutes that need to be trained on, so that's what that training covers. Other training for phase two, uh, that you may be referring to, is we, one of our officers did not make their, the standard for, to entry, for entry into the academy. Um, and that does require that an officer entering the academy, complete the fortieth percentile of the Cooper standards. And which is, the standard's based on age, gender, and it's, it's, what it comes down to is push-ups, sit-ups, and you gotta run a mile and a half, and, and all that has to be within the forty percentile of the Cooper standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much for the update. Doors, do you have anything?
I do. In the office, we have been very, very busy collecting, um, lots to get, um, to work with people getting their houses to be their own again without worry. One day last week, I don't know about anybody else. One day last week, I don't know about anybody else, but I was ready for a nap at four o'clock. Steady, the office is steady. The phones are ringing. But it's good because we're getting conversation going with these people that just need a little bit of help. The other thing I have is February fifth at ten AM here in the meeting room, we're gonna have a get connected class. This class is through AFCOG. They want people around here to be up to the standards on computers so that if they can, it can help them get a job. It's great. The get connected part is just meeting here and discussing what kind of class would be good for this area. What do we want? I welcome everybody to join 'cause they will be setting up once a week right over here. And it's different sort of classes. It's basics, it's excels, it's whatever everybody wants to choose. There's so many different options that we have in here. So, we can, we have room so we can keep them coming here on a very steady basis as long as we have involvement. So, that's what, that's what's happening as far as that goes, and anybody is welcome to join. Come here, talk about what you want, and it's gonna be at ten AM.
And it's free.
And it's free. It's all free.
Even better.
Now, is that gonna be to kinda give them an idea what people are interested in at first meeting?
This is, this is what it is. We didn't wanna start a class of basics and people don't need the basics. So, people can come here, whoever is interested, we can take, you know, talk to each other, find out what is gonna work for us. And the office and you guys, we can, we can join in on this class. Uh, that's a whole pamphlet. Do you want the whole pamphlet?
Good idea.
Yeah. But I know I'm going to be sitting in on some classes, so spread the word.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else? No?
Oh, actually, I had a question. Blood drive?
Uh, they did not do it last month, so I, I'm not sure exactly what happened, so I don't have the new, the new date on when we'll be here.
I couldn't remember if we had talked about that or not.
Well, there was a problem, so they, they didn't show up. But we'll be back on schedule 'cause they only come every three months. So, if something happens, it kinda waylays everything.
All right. Do we have any public comment? Do you not see any?
And I move that we adjourn.